Good evening. Like to call the Findlay City Schools Board of Education Organizational Meeting to order. Ms. Spence, can you call the roll?
Ms. Laura Iyer?
Here.
Mr. Chris Aldridge?
Here.
Ms. Susan Russell?
Here.
Dr. Kathy Sebanella-Rosen?
Here.
Mr. Matt Cooper?
Here. We stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Tonight's safety briefing, out the door to the left. That's how you get out of here. Moving on, I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from December 18th, 2023.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Spence?
Dr. Kathy Sebanella-Rosen?
I, I'm sorry, can't, if you talk a little bit louder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Ms. Laura Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Chris Aldridge?
Aye.
Mr. Matt Cooper?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry. Susan Russell?
Aye.
Good. Nope. I guess we're going to adjourn for the formal organizational meeting, right? I need to pass the gavel.
Uh, well, we have to motion, don't we? Yeah, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Laura Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Chris Aldridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Susan Russell?
Aye.
Dr. Kathy Sebanella-Rosen?
Aye.
I think you get to do the honors. It's a hint. That's Laura. Laura.
The official passing. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we are now going to move on to nominations for the 2024 president and approve appointment. So I would like, if there's anyone who would like to make a nomination.
I would like to nominate Chris Aldridge.
Second.
Any other nominations? Then I would like to make a motion to close nominations for the 2024 president.
So move.
Second.
And now I would like to make a motion to elect Chris Aldridge as our 2024 board president.
So move.
Second.
And then the roll call, please. Mr. Chris Aldridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Susan Russell?
Aye.
Dr. Kathy Sebanella-Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Matt Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Laura Iyer?
Aye.
Now I would like to accept nominations for the 2024 vice president and approve appointment. Are there any nominations for vice president?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Dr. Kathy Sebanella-Rosen.
Any other nominations? Then I need a motion to close nominations.
So move.
Second.
And I need a motion to elect Kathy Sebanella-Rosen as vice president, 2024 Board of Edu- Kathy Sebanella-Rosen, to your new positions.
Thank you.
I think new board members that were newly elected need to do their oath of office.
Yep, that goes first.
I'm sorry?
Swearing in?
I need to do the swearing in for anybody elected.
And then we'll do the office president, vice president.
Yep. So you want me to stand up with?
Somewhere out there. I prefer in front of the table.
Yeah, let's take them out front and center.
This is the three of us, right?
This is the three. Yep, the three that just got reelected.
This is obviously not been rehearsed.
Their oath of office, their oath of office for being reelected, yep.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, that you will faithfully and impartially discard your duties as member of the Board of Education of the Finley City Schools to the best of your ability, in accordance with the laws now in effect and thereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified. If so, please answer by saying, state your name, "I do."
Laura Iyer, "I do."
Kathy Sebanella-Rosen, "I do."
Chris Aldridge, "I do."
Do you have the officer ones?
Stating at this point, "I..."
I, Chris Aldridge.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
I solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discard my duties as board president.
I will faithfully discard, what is it?
It's discharge.
Discharge.
Discharge, I'm sorry.
My duties as president, the Finley City Schools Board of Education.
Think I will do the best of my ability.
In accordance with the best of my ability.
In accordance with the law now in effect.
In accordance with the law now in effect.
And thereafter to be enacted.
And thereafter to be enacted.
I, state your name.
I, Kathy Sebanella-Rosen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully?
And impartially?
And impartially?
Discharge?
Discharge.
My duties?
My duties.
As a board vice president?
As a board vice president.
In and for Finley City School District?
In and for Finley City School District.
Hancock County, Ohio?
Hancock County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance?
In accordance.
In accordance?
In accordance.
The laws now in effect?
Now in effect.
And thereafter to be enacted.
And thereafter to be enacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spence. All right. With that, I'd like to take a motion to, for the approval of the Board Member Code of Ethics. Can we have a motion, please?
Do we need a motion for the board ethics? Or you just got them? Do you have them?
I have them.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
And then we approve them by signature?
Is there any discussion at this point? Okay. Can, we have a roll call, Ms. Spence?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Laura Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Chris Aldridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Susan Russell?
Aye.
Dr. Kathy Sebanella-Rosen?
Aye.
Do you need to walk through these, or are we?
I think we just sign them at the end.
So, do you hand those out now, or are you gonna just, do we just sign them as we, we get them? I think historically, we've done it both ways, where we've signed them, then handed them down to you.
I have a copy for everyone, but I'd like just one signature on one page.
Oh, okay. So sign one, one copy and pass it down?
Yeah.
Oh, so just one?
Yeah. Okay, I'll sign them in the House of the Board. Since I can remember that.
So you, that's your copy?
Yep, yep.
The one that you're signing is coming down?
Yep.
There you go. Great. Okay, next, we'll move for, need a motion to approve the adoption of the proposed agenda, which also includes the regular Board of Education meeting dates.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, just wanna let Dr. Hatton know you know my conflicts, right, for the dates?
Yes.
Okay.
So, did we decide for sure that we're going to pick February 19th instead of the 12th?
I think we should have, we can have a little discussion, because February was the only one that I received where there was a little bit of conflict.
Right. So I have a conflict on the 19th, and?
As do I.
Yep, but I don't on the 12th.
So, one of the things I could have offered to the board, did you all hear that?
Aye.
There are conflicts on the 19th with two board members for the February meeting. One thing that I would like to propose to the Board of Education is maybe a February 12th meeting. If we went with February 12th, there is an all-city band concert, and I would, I'm wondering if we moved the timeframe up instead of starting at 6:00, because I believe the concert's at 7:00. So maybe if we started the board meeting that night at 5:00 or 5:30, that way we can get to the all-city band concert. Just an idea.
I'm fine with that.
Would that work for?
I think that's fine.
You guys, Mr. Cooper?
Yeah, that's fine with me. Do you need an amendment to the motion, or are you just gonna change the date?
I'll just change the date.
Okay.
It was already on there, so, yeah.
And now we're at the 12th, and you'll send us a new?
Yep, I'll send you a new one.
So then, we'll be looking for approval for the amended as discussed.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Spence?
Mrs. Susan Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Matt Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Laura Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Chris Aldridge?
Aye.
Dr. Kathy Sebanella-Rosen?
Aye.
Okay, next, moving to needing a motion for approval on the organizational consent items.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, on the, the bylaws, folks might notice that this just opens up Section B of our policies, because actually, all of Section B is our, is our bylaws. Our bylaws used to just be hand, you know, just a hard copy, but it actually has all of those sections, which now are found in our policy manual in Section B. So each one of the policies within Section B is now comprising our bylaws. So that's for any confusion. You won't find the word "bylaw" out there. It's, it's really just all of Section B with our adoption of the, the new policies that we, with OSBA. So just to avoid any confusion there.
Yep, and you're right, the header there is Section B, School Board Governance and Operations. Yep.
Yep. So it's everything within that section.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Spence? You could call the roll.
Dr. Kathy Sebanella-Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Matt Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Laura Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Chris Aldridge?
Aye.
Ms. Susan Russell?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next, we're gonna move into the regular Board of Education meeting. Do we have any reports from the superintendent, or celebrations?
Um, just brief celebrations. Congratulations to the boys' basketball team being ranked second in the state, and I always want to thank all of the teachers and the staff out there. When I get out to visit buildings, I just walk into classrooms and sit down and take a look, and I was in some amazing classrooms yesterday at Bigelow. So the, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Spence, any treasure celebrations or donations?
Just want to thank the community for all their generous support. We received a $5,000 gift from the Hancock County Convention and Visitors Bureau for the Findlay High School Wrestling and Trojan Duels. And then we've received another $5,000 from the Hancock County Convention and Visitors Bureau for the Findlay High School Girls Wrestling Flight on December 21st through the 22nd. We received a gift of $3,250 from Blanchard Valley Hospital and the Julie Cole Golf, Golf Grant to the Findlay High School Golf Program. We received 3,560 books valued at $17,000 from Janet?
Recker.
Recker?
Recker.
Recker, thank you, to the Findlay City Schools Libraries. I received a gift of Thanksgiving and Christmas meals for a family of four valued at $100 from Ed Thomas to Northview Primary. And then we received a gift of $100 from Ed Thomas to Northview Primary First Grade Holiday Projects.
Great, thank you.
Do we need to have a motion? I wanted to discuss a few of those, but do we have to motion those before we discuss? No. Okay, I wanted to talk about a couple of those that caught my attention. First, all donations. Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas and Blanchard Valley Hospital. Really appreciate the generous, generous donations there. But the ones that really caught my eye and I followed up on were the donations from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I reached out to Alyssa Preston, who's the director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, for her thoughts and a little bit more details on these donations, and I would like to share that with you. The funds awarded are through a grant program to promote travel and tourism in our, in our community. Alyssa commented that the Athletic Department is a wonderful partner in communicating upcoming events and tournaments. The Committee, the Visitors Bureau has helped both financially through grants. They provide hospitality to these visitors and provide additional resources to market the events to our community, sharing the upcoming events with our hospitality community, so we can welcome and serve our visitors appropriately. The impact of these tournaments that produce overnight stays in Hancock County is significant. An average of $382 is spent within the community for each overnight guest. Each day trip visitor converts to approximately $127 per person impact to our community. If you drove by any of the hotels out by the highway the night of the fight tournament, their parking lots were full of school-related vehicles. Alyssa added that the Findlay High School Wrestling and the hockey team were huge benefactors of our community in the month of December. The CVP, CVP acknowledges the impact of youth events, sports, music, et cetera, and proudly returns those visitor dollars back into our community for good. So thank you very much to that organization and to Alyssa for her comments. Appreciate that. I also wanted to talk about the gift from Janet Riker. Janet is a friend of mine. I've known her for now for over 25 years. And when I saw that she donated these books, I was, I, I just needed to reach out. So donated these books, I was, I, I just needed to reach out. So Janet's a friend. So I reached out and asked her if she would share some of the details, and she said yes, she'd love to. Janet explained to me that she had collected these children's books for over 40 years, traveling to Maza Museum, to the authors and illustrators' homes and studios to obtain books, many books, were auth, were actually autographed by the artist and the author. These trips were known as the Maza Study Tours and took place in the summer when teachers and librarians were free to travel. Janet shared that this was a hard decision for her to make, partying with all these books, these wonderful books, but ultimately, she decided that it was time to share her love of children's books and the joy of reading with others who could use them in their classroom, which I think is just wonderful. So thank you very much, Janet, and appreciate all of our donations and all the people that are so good to this, to our school district. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Russell, and I'd like to echo that and say again, thank you to our community for the donations. It's incredible to see it month after month, and that's what makes this, this district and our community so, so strong. So again, thank you. Next, like to look for if there are any board reports or celebrations. I'm gonna start with Dr. Sebanella-Rosen, if there's any down your direction, or?
No.
For, for any celebrations?
No.
None, okay.
I thought you were sending me.
Sorry.
I think we're good down here.
I, I actually have, I wanted to talk about the fight tournament and celebrate that. I reached out to Ben Kirian about this and got some, some really neat comments I would love to share. This tournament was, was amazing. This wrestling tournament for high school girls took place in December, December 21st and 22nd. I reached out to the organizer, wrestling head coach Ben Kirian, for details and his thoughts, and would like to share his comments. Most of these are quotes or paraphrased. Findlay High School hosted the second year of our National Federation of State High School Associations sanctioned national level girls' wrestling tournament. So "fight" stands for Findlay Invitational Girls High School Tournament. This sanctioned tournament was held in late December, and the event continued to exceed its expectations. Feedback from parents and coaches that attended said that it's one of the best-run girls' events that any of them have ever attended. We take great pride in this, as it is a testament to Findlay City Schools and our pursuit of excellence, opportunity, and belonging by running the best tournament in the country. We are showcasing our excellence, and by bringing in college coaches, we are providing opportunities not only to our athletes, but also those from other schools. By focusing on the girls' teams, we are clearly showing that our female athletes belong on a stage like this. The 2022 fight had 268 wrestlers and 43 teams. The 2023 fight had 405 wrestlers and 59 teams. This was a little over 150% growth in participants from one year to the next, and it appears that year three will be even larger due to the interest we are receiving. We feel strongly that we will meet our goal and will exceed 600 girls in the 2024 event. The team, the teams that attended this year came from eight states, Ohio, Pennsylvania, West Virginia, Indiana, Michigan, Colorado, Illinois, and Arizona. All of these teams are planning to return next year, and we're receiving interest from teams from Oklahoma and Washington State, as well as increased interest from other bordering states. Now that the 2023 event has finished, Ben will continue to start recruiting, recruiting for the 2024 event, and this process will continue until the first week of December of 2024. Thank you to our athletic director, Nate Wireal, in sharing and supporting Ben's vision for this event, it, and what it will become. And to Carrie Buck, our athletic secretary, for navigating the contracting process for our officials and our teams. Without their supports, their support, it would not, it would be impossible to run this. Thank you to our coaching staff for handling the main coaching duties that week while Ben had to juggle many administrative roles. Additional thanks to University of Findlay head coach Sean Nelson for providing a venue and workers for the event, so it can continue to grow. The Athletic Department of University of Findlay was, for continuing to work in a partnership with our Athletic Department to allow both schools to thrive and showcase the city of Findlay. The Visitors Bureau for supporting with a grant, as well as creating advertising for the event. Support from Blanchard Valley OBGYN for providing 500 gift bags to support our female athletes, as well as We Serve Cracker Barrel, Jack and Doe's, Frickers, Campus Poly eyes, and Lee's Famous Chicken, Famous Recipe Chicken, for donating food for the hospitality room. It's truly a group effort to make this event a special one. So thank you to all for this event. It was something unbelievable.
Thank you, Mrs. Russell. I do have a couple items as well I'd like to lift up. Mrs. Zellner at North, Northview Elementary would like to celebrate. The Trojan teams began today. 100% of the Northview students are on one of the 17 Trojan teams. Also, Northview's building-wide wildly important goals have been rolled out, and Northview leaders will go from earning 834 Trojan tokens to, to 3,000 by May 15th, 2024. So a great goal. And lastly, this one's incredible. One of our generous first grade, first graders frequently visits Nationwide Children's Hospital due to SMA, which is spinal muscular atrophy, which has also left him wheelchair-bound. This year, all he wants for his birthday is to be able to bring presents for the children that, in his words, "didn't get to leave when I left." The family is aiming to donate teddy bears to the 300 to 400 current patients. Based on the response on social media, Mrs. Zellner has no doubts that they will achieve this goal. So this is an incredible story, incredible student, and look forward to completing that goal. Also, Mr. Mansfield at Bigelow Hill would like to celebrate Trojan teams are going well. The beautification team has been hard at work, making the school look nice. Hometown heroes made door hangers for each classroom, and creativity for change has been working on artwork, artwork they can sell to raise funds for others. This is just to name a few of the things they've been doing. Also, Bigelow Hill will be holding their second quarter celebration on Friday, January 19th, as they recognize students who are on the All-A honor roll, A-B honor roll, and students with 95% attendance rate for the second quarter. So this is all. All right, thank you. Next, are there any committee reports? Hearing none. Then, moving to public participation, do we have any employee representatives?
I think that's me.
That's you.
So, I'm Tina Bills. I'm a Spanish teacher at Findlay High School, and I wanted to propose a trip to Peru. This is a kind of continuation of what our department has done in the past. And so the trip to Peru, we are hoping with your approval, will be in June of 2025. And, I can hand you a pocket there, man, and get one. And then, so that is, as you can see, kind of the standard thing that the tour company provided to me, with the details of our specific trip put in there, but we ensure we've got all the answers to all the questions that boards of education usually ask about liability and, you know, travel insurance and that kind of thing. So certainly, if you have any questions, I can definitely answer them. And the next thing is, with your approval, I would love to start an informational, you know, meeting. Get that on the calendar, and the sooner we get the students enrolled, the smaller the payments are for this expensive trip. And so I'm, I'm very to go and very excited about sharing the travel with my students.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Bills.
Okay, and I don't know what the, I mean, is that something that would be approved at the next board meeting, or does, I mean, I don't know what the person?
I, I think we would be working with Dr. Hatton to look when would be the best time to, to put that on for, for approval. Great, thank you.
If I can, real quick, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. I am a big believer in international travel, and in my, I've had a lot of experience with EF Tours. In fact, I've run, run a couple of requests for proposals, and just so the Board of Education is aware, EF Tours has come out on top of the previous RFPs that I've run in previous district, not even close, like other companies, just not even close with the value that they provide, and the thoughtfulness that they put into their programming and their travels, the credit that can be offered to students as well. So I'm fairly well-versed in this, and I just wanted to commend you for bringing this forward. So thank you.
Yes, and they are, like, I, I, I junk out the students back up, but I believe they have the most. but I believe they are the most used tour company for high school students traveling internationally, and they're just pretty much the, um, the stage.
Correct.
Value, I mean, consider value and experience.
Correct.
So, can I ask a couple questions, then, some more? Um, so the cost, I assume, is gonna be borne by?
Born by the students, although I had a preliminary meeting with Andrea Barker and Mark Louts, and, um, you know, we're definitely, like, brainstorming, could there be funds? Would there be donors that would be, you know, willing to donate to maybe scholarship or, or something? But yes, the, the cost would be for the students, but, uh, borne by the students and their parents, but, um, we definitely, we all want to think about how it could be more inclusive.
So, do you already have a group of students that are, that are interested in going on this?
No, I haven't, I'm, I'm, I wanted this to be the first official step.
First up? Do you have, um, have you started recruiting any adult chaperones for this trip?
No, once again, uh, and, and in fact, I don't think any of my fellow Spanish teachers, uh, because of just children and that kind of thing, I don't think they'll be going, um, on this trip. So, but I, I have a few ideas of some really good, dependable people, and, you know, of course, know some responsible parents that would probably, um, fill the chaperone role really, really well, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not concerned, I'm not concerned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, are any students? How about parents and/or public?
No.
Great. All right, now we're moving to, um, the Board of Education consent items. Can I have a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Miss Spence?
Mr. Matt Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Laura Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Chris Aldridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Susan Russell?
Aye.
Dr. Kathy Seabinella Wilson?
Aye.
All right, next, can we have a motion for the Assistant Superintendent of Personnel and HR Consent Items?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Is there any discussion that we need to have for the, these items?
Additional? Miss Spence?
Ms. Laura Iyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Susan Russell?
Aye.
Chris Aldridge?
Aye.
Mr. Matt Cooper?
Aye.
Dr. Kathy Seabinella Wilson?
Aye.
All right, next, can we have a motion for the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning and Consent Items?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Miss Spence?
Mr. Matt Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Susan Russell?
Aye.
Mrs. Ms. Laura Iyer?
Aye.
Dr. Kathy Seabinella Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Chris Aldridge?
Aye.
Okay, next, moving to, uh, a motion to discuss, uh, the Treasurer and CFO Financial Reports. Mrs. Spence, uh, or wait, let's go ahead and get a motion first. Can I have a motion for discussion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Do you, do you want a motion for discussion, or a motion to approve?
How about a motion just for discussion first?
Uh, I think we can just discuss it.
Can we discuss? Okay.
Yeah, through, through approval, all right.
Okay, Miss Spence?
Thank you. Um, I have, uh, something that, that Pam prepared that I'd like to read regarding the tax budget. Um, she said, "Attached is the completed tax budget for the hearing on January 10th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Although the budget hearing is somewhat of a formality, the tax budget is prepared in compliance with the Hancock County Auditor, the Ohio Revised Code and the State Auditor's Office. The byproduct of the tax budget and hearing is what is referred to as the Certificate of Estimated Resources or Estimated Revenues. Uh, each fiscal year, the district is required to receive a certificate from the county auditor, uh, which include, in that certificate are the tax estimates, which the auditor, the county auditor completes, other resources, um, which is provided by the tax, the way of the tax budget. And the entire budget is, is attached for review."
Any additional discussion?
No, it's, it really is a formality in preparation for the meeting with the auditor, Hancock County Auditor.
Okay. Can we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Miss Spence?
Mrs. Susan Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Matt Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Laura Iyer?
Aye.
Dr. Kathy Seabinella Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Chris Aldridge?
Aye.
Okay, we do not have an executive session planned?
Correct.
Uh, but, um, so what I'll need is a, uh, motion for adjournment. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Miss Spence?
Mr. Matt Cooper?
Aye.
Dr. Kathy Seabinella Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Laura Iyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Susan Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Chris Aldridge?
Aye.